I'm going to call the Village Nukler's Board Meeting to order. Lynn, would you please do the roll call?
Sure. Mike Bell?
Present.
Mike Ganser?
Here.
Peggy Cruz?
Present.
Chuck Phillipsen?
Here.
Tammy Newberry?
I'm here.
Roger Trutman?
Here.
And Lori Wertz?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I'd look for an approval of the agenda.
I would move for approval of agenda. Mike Ganser?
I'll second it. Michael Bell?
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item three, public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And if you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I'd look for an approval of the consent agenda.
I would so move for the approval of consent agenda, including items A, B, C, D, E, and F excluding G, H, and I.
I'll second. Tammy Newberry?
Okay, Tammy. Any discussion?
Yeah, why are you excluding those three items? Mike, this is Chuck.
I just wanted to address those separately, Chuck.
Okay, okay.
No other reason.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mike, item G, update monthly building inspector's report. Mike Ganser, did you want to speak on that?
I just wanted to look at them a little bit more closely and I don't find anything particularly out of order. But as I say, I just wanted to look at them separately.
Okay. Does any other board member have anything to address this issue?
This is Chuck. If not, I would move the approval of item G on the agenda, under the consent agenda. Did you get that?
Yep, we got that, Chuck. I need a second, please.
Mike Ganser, Mike here, I would second.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, update monthly utility financials. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
Right, I didn't see anything. Mike, what was your concern?
I just wanted to address those items separately from the other ones, Tammy.
Okay.
I don't necessarily have any concern, but I was more concerned with if there were other board members that may have some concern.
This is Chuck. I think Mike's point is well taken that we might have overload of things under our consent agenda that maybe need a little more oversight. I don't have any problem.
Okay.
I see, but
Drake, did you want to say anything specific about those items?
Unless there's any questions, I don't have anything necessarily to to say about them.
This is Chuck. I would move we approve item H under the what is listed as
utility financials, and I would second that. Ganser, Mike?
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, update monthly budget to actual report.
Were there any major differences, Drake? Cash flow, total cash flow?
I don't think there's anything too notable out of the ordinary. Lynn, do you have, is there anything to draw attention to in this month's budget to actual report?
Nothing caught my attention when I prepared it. That may change in the next couple of months, but at this point, it looks pretty normal for five months out of the year.
This is Chuck. This might be a good point to bring up bring up the question for future discussion as to how do we get a handle on what the COVID situation is going to do to our future budget? And maybe maybe for our next meeting, we could, or if possible, I don't know if it's even possible to figure that right now. Lack of revenues, maybe no lack of revenues, I don't know. It's something that needs to be considered prior to our our budget considerations, I'm sure. So, that's just a comment.
It's a great comment. I agree with you here on Chuck too, because it's always good to kind of look forward and see, you know, obviously, local businesses are hurting. How does that can also affect current our village administration or village as well? How are we going to be losing out on finances? And what should we start expecting here for the rest of this year? So yeah, I'm going to have to agree with you on that, Chuck.
Perhaps, this is Peggy, perhaps we could initiate and send out a survey to businesses and see just how they're coping?
I think that would be a chamber issue, in my eyes.
I agree. I think we're marking with our own our own revenue changes possibly and what we might do to in future help our businesses. But as for right now, I think it's just something we need to keep in the back of our minds that there's going to be what I think is a major change in how we approach our budgeting process for the coming year. So I just think we should be looking at that now rather than in an emergency situation.
Right, so you're concerned about revenue, correct?
Basically, yes. But also, also I'm concerned about if there are any ways we could we could help our local businesses. I don't know what they might be. But it's just something I'd like to see for future discussion. It's out of the blue tonight, and I don't expect a discussion on it tonight. I just wish our, you know, everybody has that in their mind and maybe Lynn and Drake can put their heads together and start thinking, and I'm sure they already have, but start thinking about where we're going to be three months from now.
Ganser, Mike here, and I was wondering if it would be to the benefit of inviting a conversation with, maybe perhaps with Lynn and Drake and Becca Stafford. I think she, anybody probably has got a close handle on what the businesses are doing and what perhaps what their needs may be.
Good point.
This is Peggy. In addition to that, we, do you, Drake, anticipate or have you been enlightened in any way about revenue stream in terms of citizens or what we can expect for tax revenue? Have there been any conferences on that or meetings that are coming up on these issues?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I'd anticipate that there's going to be lag. As we're property tax based, there's going to be lag before local governments may see impacts to, you know, assessments to properties which may then possibly impact property tax revenue. But at this time, I don't have a clear answer for you at this time. I can tell you that the expenses we've incurred for COVID related aren't aren't huge. You know, there's some and we are tracking those and preparing some of the various grant opportunities that may be available to us. But the revenue side, I don't think there's quite as clear of a picture for us yet, how it may or may not affect revenue in future budget years.
Drake, this is Lynn. I just might add that for the property taxes, there was an option for delayed payments, breaking it down over the course of the rest of the year. However, Green County in surveying all the municipalities chose not to do that. So our tax revenues, as far as that goes, should come in just like they normally do unless people just are able to pay their taxes. We might see that happening. The only other thing that probably is worth a little note is the interest rate has dropped significantly. But looking at it, the budget, we generally try to underestimate interest just because these things can happen. So I think we'll be fine in that respect. Those were the only two revenue concerns. I would say at this point, it's kind of early in the pool program to see what's going to happen there. But that's probably going to have some effect as well. Well, I think
Go ahead.
This is Peggy. I just want to say Chuck is right. We should just keep this on the burner and bring it up occasionally to see that we're prepared for any significant change.
We will prepare. Lynn and I can prepare something for a soon soon, soon to be future board meeting for your board review.
Very good.
Okay, I need a motion on item I.
This is Chuck. I would move we approve item I update under the consent agenda.
Ganser, Mike here, I would second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Parks and Recreation Committee. A, discussion consideration of opening village basketball courts. Before, I'm going to ask for the floor here because I want to make sure all the board members kind of know what has happened here. Last weekend, and I don't know what day it was, it was Saturday or Sunday, but the yellow tape was taken down. And then Megan told me that the police department put it back up again. When I came back from work yesterday morning, somebody had taken the poles down and the yellow tape. And I went down about quarter after seven and I started looking for the pole, the
Posts.
Posts, thank you. And I found some laying in the grass, but whoever took them down decided that they were going to take three of them and throw in the pool. You know, now we want to open this thing up and I don't begrudge the good kids in town or whoever that want to play basketball. I'm for opening it up at this point, but I am going to say if we go through a second one where we have to shut it down, I'm going to be in favor of taking the hoops completely off. Because that's ridiculous if people are going to vandalize the village property like that. That's all I got to say.
And then, I guess just from my notes, the Parks and Recreation Committee did meet and discuss this. They did not issue a recommendation on keeping it open or keeping it, or opening it or keeping it closed. But they did ask that if the board does choose to open it, that I draft some language. And in my notes, the draft I came up with that is as follows. Contact sports are associated with an increased risk of contracting COVID-19. It is recommended to only engage in these activities with household members. Use this court at your own risk. And we would post that in signs similar to like what's around the playgrounds if the board chose to open up the basketball courts and we would post those around the courts for the public to see.
And when you, we talked a little bit about having at least one sign that says suggested limit six to meet social distancing guidelines on that court? Or are we not going to do anything like that?
We can. The, I guess I didn't include it just because the amount of people isn't necessarily the issue from what I understand from the public health experts. It's the type of activity. So two people from different households playing one-on-one is still a high risk, is still considered a high-risk activity. So playing basketball in a basketball game which involves contact, that's where the the danger or chance, I should say, of transmission would occur. So I didn't want, I didn't want to put anything out there that may indicate that if you're playing with only five people, it's safe. When it's the activity itself, that is considered the high risk.
So you're saying so you're saying that you're concerned if we put the suggested limit of six, that they would read that as three-on-three basketball was okay, not what we're trying to say is they still need to maintain social distancing, so that would be like two persons per
Right. I think what we're trying to say is that the village, if we open, it's saying that the village is opening the court. The use of this court for the use of basketball with other people carries a risk of some magnitude of possible transmission. And so warning them that it's, this activity is a higher than normal risk because of the contact between players. I guess that's how I would explain it, is that the activity is considered high risk. So if you're using the court to play basketball with other people, there is a risk of the possibility of transmitting or contracting COVID-19 because of that contact.
I understand what you're saying, Drake, but my thought is, is that with the pool, we have we have limits on how many people can be in there and we have people that can watch that. With baseball, we have talked with baseball coaches and the different things, and we kind of have somebody kind of monitoring the amount of people playing and how they're playing. The basketball court is highly unmonitored and I don't want, I'm kind of concerned that they would think that we could have a group of 50 people down there playing basketball again. And I don't really know that that's what we're intending by reopening it, but I guess maybe we can't make those suggestions that there still needs to be social distancing practiced here. Do you know what I'm saying? And that the court size would still have limitations on the number of persons that could be here that, do you see what I'm saying?
Sure. I guess it becomes more difficult. You know, allowed and not allowed is an easy rule to enforce. For example, our police department, if they're going to enforce a closure, if we tried to enforce, you know, if we put a cap on how many people could be on the court at a time, it may be possible. It becomes more difficult. We can try. But it is, it is an unmonitored amenity similar to a playground. And so I guess we, I'm open to working on however the board would like it enforced. But it does pose some difficulties for enforcement if we put, depending on the the restrictions we place on it to allow it to open.
This is Chuck. I don't, I don't want to put any, I wouldn't want to see the board put any additional pressure on the police department to have to police the basketball courts. I think Tammy's thoughts on the number of people on the courts just isn't, it's not workable. So if we say only six people on the basketball court, it comes back to what Drake stated. So we got a three-on-three game going. It's a contact sport, six people in contact with each other. We've opened up the playgrounds. We've opened up the ballparks essentially and ideally, they're only there with adult supervision, but I happen to know that that's not the case. There are numerous kids just playing pickup games on the, at Glaner Park, you know, which I have a close view of. I don't know about Vets Park. So it would seem that it's just time to open up the basketball court with the with the proper signage that says take your chances. I don't, I don't agree with that. I think, I don't agree with anything that would cause the spread of COVID. But we're getting to the point now where this is almost beyond our control. People are restless, people are, I mean, you just go downtown on any day of the week and you'll see people congregating on the streets and particularly on a weekend with no thought towards the COVID thing. And I, sadly, I don't think there's much we can do about it. I think if we had the proper signage at the basketball court, play at your own risk, yeah, they're probably going to be spreading COVID. I think we know this thing is going to spike. But rather than rather than face the alternative of vandalism and the mean-spirited nasty emails that I'm sure we've all received, I know I have from the wannabes and the, you know, I want to be part of I, I think we might as well open it up with with the safeguards of signage. And I think Dane County is going to open up, I think they're going to open up their courts under phase two. They're still, you know, most places aren't opening swimming pools, which we have already done. I think we've got good safeguards in place. I know there's been some complaints about access, but that's just too bad, you know? I just think we're going to have to slowly start opening up. That's it, I'm done.
Chuck, Mike Ganser here. Yeah, just to add a little bit to your discussion, I too have driven around Nukler's here and I've seen that social distancing is out of the question. I don't see it anywhere. And with that, with that in mind, I am against opening up the courts.
I can't hear you, Bert.
What's going on here?
Chief, can you?
Little bit better, but keep going there, chief.
I don't know what's going on. I just wanted to say thanks to Chuck for, either we're open or we're closed because kids or seven kids or eight kids, it makes it very difficult for us and, you know, puts us in a tough spot. So I think it's easier to say, hey, you don't belong on there because there's yellow tape around it, or you can be on it because they've opened it up. And I agree with the sign, it's play at your own risk, whatever that number is. But again, I appreciate not putting a number on it. It's like the pool. I mean, is there 21 or 22 kids in there? I don't know, but that should be something to pool or it should be monitored, not particularly the police department.
Yeah, this is Chuck. I don't think there's any way that the police department should have to be responsible for for monitoring these, these things unless there's, you know, criminal activity, but no, I don't, you can be, I don't think the police department should be policing COVID.
I absolutely agree with that, and I guess I wasn't really thinking about who would monitor that. My fear is that and just saying, and I also thought that the reason we probably need to just loosen up and open up is because we were going to put too much pressure on the police department to monitor the playgrounds and all of that. So I get that. I guess I was saying it probably wouldn't be enforced, but more of a suggestion of what that number would be for that court to be properly socially distanced rather than we would actually go there and count the number of kids and make it. But rather give them an idea of what proper social distancing on that court would look like. Does that make more sense?
Yes, it definitely does, Tammy. That makes much more sense.
So with Drake's sign, you know, in regards to the, with Drake's sign in regards to the COVID-19 and contact sports and all that, you know, I was just thinking if we had something that said proper distancing on this court would be, you know, more than six people on the court. But if, if that, I think, maybe you're right, I'm just, but I was just trying to avoid the idea that, okay, it's open, so let's have our 50 kids come down here and congregate again. I guess that's probably going to happen anyway, but I was just trying to help with some kind of a number where it would still say, we're still hoping for social distancing. That's all I was trying to say.
This is Roger. I'm going to interject something here. First of all, I think the village has done a great job of our due diligence on keeping this, our residents safe through all this. I drive by there many times when there's kids down there up until all this happened, and I really have never seen eight or 10 kids there at any one time. I've never seen a group of any more than that. So I don't know if things would change now, but I just don't think we'd have money, moreover, maybe eight or 10 kids there at one specific time.
And historically, the officers are telling me that that's what they're seeing. There are groups of six, eight, 10, you know, you're not getting 30, 40 big groups of kids around. And I'll tell you, as a parent, kids are doing things, whether they're going down the river tubing or they're going for I mean, these people are up for three months and summer's here and as a parent, it's, what are you going to do? Say no? You're going to isolate in your home the rest of the the summer and maybe go back to school in the fall? It just is what it is.
Okay, okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and open the basketball courts effective as soon as possible with the signage that Drake has suggested.
And I will second it. That's Lori Wertz.
Any further discussion?
I would love to try and mention here, I'm still remembering an email that I received two weeks ago in regards to this and it, and more of, it really stood out to me because they're saying, you know, we should open up, but we should also make sure that the public is well aware that we as a village can at any time close things down in case if XYZ were to happen, whether it's following, you know, Dane County's Badger bounce-back plan and things like that. Or if it's just, hey, there's vandalism that's going on to our property. If these things are starting to happen, then we should still make sure the public is aware that we can shut down anything that we want at any point in time. So please still be respectful for our property and please be respectful for the fact that we're We're going against the grain and trying to open it up and make it available to them.
That's a really good point, Mike Bell, I, I agree with that 100%, and I think that might be added into the signage. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, some, some sort of either in the signage or just, I don't, I don't really want to push the button. It is important for people to realize that we're doing this.
Right, I think maybe the newspaper might be the way to get that out, because I don't think, I think that is, the signs can't be too complex or they. You know, they won't be, they won't, they'll just be ignored more than maybe they already will be, but the, I understand what you're saying because I absolutely agree. We would hope that people would be respectful and understanding that we are giving them this privilege, that it's not a right maybe. But that probably has to be done in a different way other than the signs, because I just don't know how you could say all that in a sign.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to, yeah, I agree with you.
Well, maybe, maybe, you know, we don't really have a newspaper, so maybe we could put it on our, on our village Facebook page, maybe we could. Put it on our village. Webpage, just to try to, to get that. Information, I think it's, I think it's a really important point. That, that I have seen used in other. Places, so it's, in some way, I think we need to get that out. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Mike, I think that's.
Yeah, I agree with Mike, I mean, if it gets out of control, we can monitor and we can get back to the different committees and say, hey, listen, these kids are getting out of control on the basketball court, maybe we should shut it down. But I will also say another thing, as a parent with kids playing in the parks and everything, the families really watch the kids, what they're doing, where they're going, and the benefit that we have in a small community. Is all of our kids knows all the kids, there's not a lot of interaction with strangers coming from Madison or Chicago, I mean, these are all kids that go to school together, that play together. And I know as a parent and talking to other parents that everybody's kind of monitoring it, I mean, nobody's going to just let their kids go to the wolves, so to speak, and into something that's a bad situation, so. You know, the parents are really monitoring from my conversations with them, so I think that's all a positive and that's a good thing we have going as a small, kind of tight-knit community, is there's not a lot of outside interaction to. Kind of bring that in, I'm not saying it's not possible, but I'm just saying it is monitored by the parents also.
Okay, Lynn, we have a motion, a second, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Sorry, had on mute, Mike Bell.
Yes.
Mike Ganter.
No.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Roger Trutman.
Yeah.
And Lori Wertz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Lynn. Item six, Public Works Public Safety, consideration, discussion, authorization to bid the police department renovation project.
We are at the point in the design process, we are ready to issue bid documents to get some hard numbers back. There's some design documents attached to your packet for your review, but at this time, we are simply seeking the authorization to bid the project, after we got bids back. We would come back to the board with a recommendation and obviously a comprehensive budget. So just looking for the authorization to bid and then it'll be. Coming back later this summer to the board for project award and, project award and or other decisions the board may have to make at that time.
This is Chuck, I would move the authorization for bids for the police department remodel project.
Peggy, you'll second?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. President's report, discussion consideration appointment of Shelley Trutman to the library board, this is Shelley's second term. I look for a motion to approve.
This is Tammy, I'll make a motion to approve Shelley Trutman to be a library board for a second term.
Answer it, Mike, I would second that.
Okay.
There's a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I had some discussion with Linda and the library board would really like some representation from the village board. So I really, really would like to see somebody step up and take on that. Position, please. Any further business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.